All right, thank you everyone for coming. Today is Tuesday, December 14, 2021. This is the regular meeting of the Asbury Park zoning board and adjustment. Mr. Adelody, will you please call us to order?
I would love to, and welcome everyone finally back to an in-person meeting in the zoning board. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are filed with the board secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. Fire exits are located on the east and west sides of the council chambers as well as the back of the building. I ask everyone, please, to kindly silence your cellphones for the duration of this meeting, and this meeting is being recorded by APTV. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll now make roll. Daniel Harris.
Here.
Brittany Aspen.
Here.
Kim Platt.
Here.
Joe Potter. It's Aspen. Wendy Glassman.
Here.
Kevin Minarvini.
Here.
Bonnie Nash.
Here.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
And Christopher Adelody.
Here.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, so just, we have one housekeeping issue to take care of. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the zoning board virtual meeting of July 13th, 2021.
I'll second.
Thank you, and all eligible members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, minutes tomorrow.
And just one further announcement for the zoning board and our professionals. Mark Siegel has resigned from the city as our zoning officer, and we will be having a new zoning officer starting within a couple of weeks. And I believe you may know her, right, Brittany? You do?
I'm a good girl.
Okay. All right, so we welcome Mr. and Mrs. Adler. Alder. Alder, please come up.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
We have eight members. Who is the alternate?
I am. One of them. I have the other one.
Who's first of all?
First is, uh, Cap, uh, no, it's Bonnie. Yeah. Bonnie is all the number one.
So Bonnie is the seventh member?
Yes.
She is the eighth. If you participate, if we come to a vote, we will need all of them. Certainly, I'm interested.
Please come up.
Yeah.
All right, it's my understanding that you will not be having an attorney represent you tonight, and you'll be representing yourselves.
Correct.
Okay, so please, take a seat. I think Jack will have to swear you both in.
I'm sorry, and please make sure you speak into the microphone. Please, if I go with half.
Okay.
These are your audience. We're going to have both of you speaking at the same time. You sound sort of the test one, like, there was no, but.
I do.
I do.
Do you state your name for the record, spell it each, and your address, please?
Jane, J-A-N-E, Alder, A-L-D-E-R. Are we getting the address for the house?
Not that.
Is that where you reside?
No.
No, okay. Where do you reside?
Uh, 301 Fourth Avenue, apartment 302, Asbury Park.
Robert Alder, A-L-D-E-R, 301 Fourth Avenue, apartment 302, Asbury Park.
Thank you. So you're coming here before us to ask for some variances, both C and D variances, on 407 Fourth Avenue. Is that correct?
Yeah.
All right, so, please begin.
Okay, so when we originally purchased this home, back in December, it's our intent to restore this home as much as possible to its original condition, as best as we can. Obviously, it's been modified from where it was originally a single-family home, and it's been turned into a four-family home, which I understand is how it's grandfathered now, although it's, I guess, zoned a single-family now on that block. So, from what we understand about the house, it was originally built and faces directly across at 405 Fourth Avenue, and both homes were originally built and owned by the same family. And then they were converted into, I guess, multifamily homes. So it's just my wife and I who will be living in the home, so we really do not have a need for all the space. I mean, I don't know if you're familiar with this home, but it's a pretty substantial home. So we're trying to.
Right now, it's four apartments, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you're going to be converting the interior to two-family?
Correct. The first two floors to live on for ourselves, and then the third floor to be a separate apartment.
And you're going to be eliminating, I assume, that fire escape that's on the outside of the building?
As soon as we can. Yes, it obviously really detracts from the look of the home. You know, we believe it's a beautiful, to us, historic home, and, you know, we want to open the porch back up on the front and side as it was originally built, and it was closed in at one point to become a separate bedroom and kitchen for one of the apartments. But, you know, in our eyes, with the porch restored and opened back up, it would just, you know, make it a much more beautiful home.
If I may, I'll be swearing on professionals in case.
Please do, Jack.
You state your names for the record and your affiliation with the board.
Donna Miller. Ford Platter.
Jason Fisher, Inside Engineering, Board Engineer.
Please continue.
So.
What are your plans for the exterior, Mr. Alder?
So our original plan was to go over the, to leave the top two floors as they are, but to take, to remove the shingle siding off of the first floor and put on a, like a hardy board, like a clapper.
So you're going to remove the clapboard that's on there now?
Well, that was our, our original plan was to take the siding off and, right, and remove the clapper. But our contractor went over there last week and pulled one of the shingles off and said that the original cedar clapper under there is in really good shape, from what he can see, as well as the cedar shake on the top two floors. So if that actually turns out to be the case, as that shingle siding being removed, we would like to keep it with the original cedar that was up there and just paint it, because we, like we said, we'd like to try.
Is that on the entire exterior of the building, or have you looked all around the building?
We have not obviously removed the shingle siding.
Right.
So when we remove the shingle siding on the first floor, if the cedar clapper is.
My understanding, that's like an asbestos shingle or something. Is that correct?
Well, we haven't had it tested. I've heard that same thing, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
But obviously, it would have to be removed and in accordance with the applicable codes and stuff. From what I understand about asbestos shingle siding, it's a low level of asbestos and does not require.
A certain type of remediation?
Correct.
Okay.
So.
Is that true?
I deal with it all the time.
Yeah.
It's different. It's not like the asbestos that you find wrapped around pipes.
Right.
Asbestos siding is different. He's correct. It's not, it's not a hazard as open asbestos would be.
Thank you, Bonnie.
So that would be our intent, is to try and keep it original if we can, to take that siding, shingle siding that was added off and go back to the original cedar, if that's possible. If not, then we'll have to go, if that cedar turns out to be something that can't be salvaged, then we would go back to the hardy board plank siding that we were originally going to do.
And you plan on keeping the ornamental parts of the building itself intact?
Absolutely.
Okay. But you're going to open up the porch, and then you're going to have to decide on how the porch is going to look, what type of railings, what type of columns, right? Is that correct?
That is correct. So what we did bring with us is a picture of the house that's kind of like a sister house that's across from it, and what we really want to try to do is match the porches. So this is a picture of 405 Fourth Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Now, I'm familiar with the house.
Okay, so we intend to, with, I believe these are called colonial posts that are up there, as well as the white railings such as this.
Mm-hmm.
With the, I guess they're square pickets they are called, or spindles.
Right.
So that would be our intent, to do something like that, but we probably would not use real wood on that, but we probably, we wouldn't use vinyl either. We'd probably be using like a composite material that's more durable and requires less maintenance, but would not look like vinyl, which would obviously not be consistent with the original look.
I totally agree.
Now, did you want to mark that?
Yeah, why don't you retire even when I get one?
And is that, did you need a copy of that, or are we okay? Yeah.
So if I understand, you're going to be living there yourselves full-time?
Yes.
Yes.
And then the upstairs is going to be rented?
The third floor, correct.
Okay. And so then that third floor, is that currently an attic space, or is that an apartment up there? What's up there now?
It's an apartment. Is it about, you know how big it is, like 800 square feet?
Well, the third floor is roughly 800 square feet.
Yeah.
But it's part of, part of one of the apartments in the building, currently.
Okay. And what are your plans for the interior itself? You said you're going to take the first two floors for yourselves?
Correct. So the first floor, we are losing some of the living space there by converting it back into a porch.
Back to a porch.
Although, like I said, this has more, this house has more space than we need, and we do think that having the porch back is essential to restoring the original look of the house. So then the first floor would be a, in the front, would be something like a study or a small office or a living room, and then as you move towards the rear on the first floor, there's a dining room, family room, and a kitchen, and then a bathroom.
Your architect is Mr. Conduitori?
Uh, Jason Hanrahan was the person who actually did it, but I believe that's the same company, yes.
Okay. You plan to put the windows back where the porch, are you having windows?
In the front room?
Yes.
Yeah, there is, I believe there's a door on the front as well as a window on the front to exit out onto the porch. But yeah, windows would be put back into that room.
Okay. So these are the plans?
Correct. And then the second floor is four bedrooms, one of which is a master with a bath, and then another bathroom.
And the laundry.
And the laundry.
Sounds very nice.
I hope so.
Does anybody on the board have any further questions for Mr. and Mrs. Alder?
I have a quick one. You said the attic currently is part of a unit. Is it part of the second floor and they go upstairs?
Yes.
So it's two floors now, that unit, and it's going to just be one floor. You'll have the two floors. And then, so if there's four families, is it two units on the first floor now?
Yeah.
And then two units on the upstairs, and one of them has access to the other?
Correct.
So basically, you're not changing the footprint of the building at all. You're going to keep it basically the same as it is now. You're just going to renovate the interior, open up the front porch, convert it from a four to a two, and I don't have a lot of questions after that.
That's it.
That's correct, yes.
I don't think you addressed the windows. Are you going to have windows? Are you going to?
Yeah, we're going to replace the windows.
Okay. Are they going to be decorative windows?
I don't know if we know what that exactly means, to say it's a decorative window.
I defer to Donna, because that's her comment.
So, you know, sometimes we'll note that a house may have originally come with six over one or six over six, divided lights, you know, the panes of glass.
Correct.
They don't end up.
Right.
This house has been so corrupted over time, you know, it has horrible small replacement windows in it now. So would you just use a clear, no divided light upper and lower stash? Will they double up? Will they, or will you try and go for a six over one pattern?
I don't, you know, I don't know that we really decided on that, but I think what we, like with everything else, we're going to try to get a better idea of what fits in and what we believe would have probably been original, and go back with something like that. So if six over one is probably what was originally there, then that would be our preference.
It's possible that it may have just been, you know, plain one over one double ones.
Right.
Right.
Just, you know, scanning the other neighborhood photos, I mean, pretty much everybody's done with those, so there's not much to, you know, compare with, but I think the key would be proportion, that they're double ones, and to try, I mean, if you're going to mimic 405 as much as possible, you know, that would be very in character and consistent with that.
The six over one would?
But even like the way it's trimmed, you know, the border of outside the window.
Correct, right. Like a nice wood.
A flat.
Right, going around the window.
That's like four people live all the way around.
Right.
The house next door actually has a decorative header over the windows, like a crown molding. You don't necessarily have to do that, but that is what's on 405. So just take that into, you know, I know you're still at the very preliminary stage of what your exterior renovations don't really look like. And again, we're not dealing with something that you know was on this house, so we're kind of like, you know.
Sneaky.
Maybe it's nice, but that might be overkill.
Yeah.
So I have some questions in regards to your, how are you going to handle the stormwater of the structure of the house? From what I can see, the house currently has no gutters or no downspouts or nothing at all. So I'm going to ask that we need to understand how you're going to remediate the water.
So we don't have that answer right now. We certainly have seen the issue with the water rolling off, and we are aware, you know, that it needs to be dealt with. I don't know yet how we'll do it, but you can clearly see that the water, the way it is, lays against the foundation of the house, too, and is obviously.
All of those things, not a good thing.
Right.
There are no downspouts, no way to remediate the water, especially what we're having, these types of storms now.
Correct.
It's one of our important issues that come up for anyone here in Asbury, is stormwater management. So you need to have an answer to that.
Okay, we'll have to talk to our contractor about what's the best way to deal with that issue. You know, we're aware of the problem, and when we did our home inspection before we bought it, we could see that, you know, and he pointed out that the water was pooling against the foundation because there are no gutters.
Right.
So we're going to suggest that you incorporate putting gutters on the house. It doesn't have to be every, you know, horizontal roofline that your contractor can figure out where the best place is to capture, and then where those downspouts come down will be key, and then what happens to the water, you know, the board engineer would probably recommend, you know, a couple of alternatives, so that A, you're not, you know, trapping water against the foundation, which is going to start a problem pretty long term, doesn't run off to your neighbor's property. You know, the board is very interested in sustainability and resilience, so we want to infiltrate stormwater into the ground, but it has to be done in a way that's safe, so it doesn't damage your foundation, it doesn't affect neighbors, and doesn't just go across the sidewalk and create freezing hazard in the winter, so.
Perhaps Jason can give you some suggestions, Jason, in regards to this issue? It really is an important issue for us.
And, you know, for us also, one of the, one of the things about the gutters that we had thought about but aren't really sure about is how that affects the look of the house, because I don't think it was originally built with them, but we understand that we have to deal with the water issue, but, you know, for many different reasons that it has to be dealt with.
Jason, do you have any suggestions for them in regards to this issue?
Design-wise, at this point, not really, because I, you know, I haven't scrutinized this, but I understand the issue. Of course, the first thing we have to look at is a matter of compliance.
Right.
Is it major development, minor development, or less than minor development? In this case, it's less than minor development. So the only real requirement is not to increase runoff to the neighbors, but what's been identified is an issue on the property that needs to be rectified.
Sure.
So we can certainly speak with the app and guide them on how best to do that.
Does that seem like a viable solution for you guys?
To work with him to.
Yes.
Figure out the best way to deal with the water? Absolutely.
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay.
Can you talk a little bit about the existing garage and parking?
So the existing garage is really only accessible by vehicle from driving across the backyard. There's no driveway that goes all the way to the garage. So we really hadn't, we don't have a firm plan for what to do with that right now. I mean, we're not, it's not our intent to try to extend the driveway all the way to the garage, nor is it our intent to drive over the grass every day. So we probably would not use it for storage of vehicle, but more like probably for a lawnmower and stuff like that that we need. The driveway is quite long. You know, we park side by side at the end of it, and it's, I would guess you could probably fit seven cars in that driveway right now, as big as it is, and from my understanding, when it was in use as a four, you know, fully rented as a four-family house, there was quite a few cars parked in that driveway, so.
Currently, the house is empty, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Correct. So it would just be our intent, we only have two cars, one each, and then whatever car parking would be needed by a tenant, but this is only a one-bedroom apartment that's going, so we don't intend to have very many people living, obviously, on the third floor with a, with only one bedroom up there. So hopefully, nobody who would have more than one car also.
And it's your intention to keep it tandem parking, so you would have to be moving your car when your renter wants to move and vice versa? It's not, there's not going to be an independent parking spot for your renter?
So I think it would have to remain tandem parking, because we can't come up with another solution to that. I work in Manhattan, so I'm not there a lot during the week. I stay up in Jersey City quite a bit, and my wife works from home, so she's there all the time. So if cars have to be shuffled around, I mean, it's, it would just be, for the majority of the time, it's just her car there, and then whatever car a tenant would bring. But like I said, she's home and she can, you know, if necessary, move the car.
You do understand that when we grant variances, it goes to the property and not to you as persons? So if you renovate this home and sell two years later, the property then continues with the approvals.
The approvals.
So while I understand it may work right now for you guys, we have to think about the next 50 or 75 or 100 years of approvals that we're granting, so just a consideration.
So, and I wish I had a better answer for you. I wish I had a solution and I could say, hey, this is what we're going to do, but we don't really want to turn more of what's of the grass into driveway either to create another space. And I don't see another solution other than that. I know, I mean, our neighbors have told us.
The driveway currently is gravel, is that correct?
It's asphalt.
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 Yes.
Okay.
So the neighbors have told us they had seen on occasion when people, you know, drove across the front yard to get out, and, but that's obviously not a solution to this problem. So short of making another space somewhere along the front of the house, which really would kind of change the entire look and not be a good solution either.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we'd be supportive of a space in front of the house, no.
Right. And then.
This, this block, the majority of this block, if I'm picturing the block properly, there's a lot of multifamily homes.
They're all multifamily, huh?
In and around this area. Most of them, if I'm not mistaken, do have parking in the rear. Most of them do, right?
I don't know.
The whole block, that whole block in front is permit parking.
Yeah.
It's all marked as permit parking.
That block is permit parking?
Yeah, yeah.
Both sides.
As well as the block we live in, which is the block before, the 300 block is also permit parking.
I mean, I, I see a problem about the parking, and I, again, I don't have a solution for you, but I don't think the, your current work arrangements are a satisfactory answer to the problem. If a tenant, if someone needs to move their car and you've gone to a market for, you know, half an hour, and somebody needs to get out, I think that there has to be a better solution if it's going to be a multifamily, even if you're bringing it down to a two-family.
Two-family.
So it's not a.
Two-family, sorry.
Two-family.
Two-family, sorry. But.
I mean, you are going from a four-family, so you have a lot more occupants, so you need less parking.
There was over 20.
It's a two-family, which is always a plus.
There was over 20 people living in that house.
And St. Louis, you have pictures of cars parked in the front yard.
And I'm aware of that as well.
You have to be in the parking, because everybody gets a key. Everybody that lives in the house gets a key. I felt with tandem parking. This way, if you have to move a car, you already told him to move the cars. That's one.
So.
But there are, there are a couple of alternatives.
And Jason and I have talked a little bit about, you know, dimensionally, how it might, there might be possibilities for getting it to work. One option is to create a small one-car space adjacent to where the driveway currently terminates at the back of the house, along the fence, so that you would have two cars stacked that would be, for example, you know, the property owners, and then the tenant space would be, you know, parallel to, next to, and then that would give enough room for the tenant to be able to back out the driveway. And since the owners are in tandem, we permit that, you know, normal multifamilies, they are only blocking themselves, so there's no obstacle to that. Another alternative is, there is a ridiculously huge unused parking lot next door to the church, and perhaps there's an agreement that can be made with the church to accommodate one car. You know, and then probably the worst-case alternative is create a three-car parking lot in the back door that they can pull out and turn around and come headfirst out the driveway. We don't think there's enough room to do three parallel spaces along the fence and still clear the house without, you know, danger clipping the porch, unless part of that side porch is going to come off as part of the renovation, then there would be more room, and then there wouldn't be, you know, issue. It would have, it would be like three parallel parking spaces on the street, and you just, you know, pull your little slide out and back out the driveway. But as we've measured it, it's only about 14 feet between that, in that narrowest gap, which is not enough clearance to have the traveling, you know, and a parking space. And it's just because of that, that one little bugged out of porch. So I guess it's four alternatives. Take off that little piece of porch and then, you know.
And that first.
You can leave the porch and put a little, one parking space in the backyard. You can get parking next door and the enormous unused parking lot in the church, or pave the entire backyard and a three-car parking lot.
So if it was a single-family house, how many parking spots would they need?
Two.
Even though they have a bunch of bedrooms under the.
Under the city ordinance. Under RSIS, if it's a five-bedroom, single-family house, they would need more than two, but we haven't, you know, the city doesn't subscribe to RSIS standards. We hold everybody to the city standard. And again, in a single-family house, there's, even under RSIS, you're allowed to park tandem.
Forty fifteen, straight to the existing garage, which I know you don't want to do, but.
Yeah, but again, in order to make, like, to use the garage as a garage.
Right.
There's not enough room between the opening of the garage.
I don't know. It's a little more hard surface for the property.
Yeah, and now.
And a previous surface coverage.
Right. So they would exceed that, maybe a variance for previous coverage.
I don't think that's a viable option.
It's not consistent with what we've asked in the past for people to do.
Especially since we're talking about stormwater management and.
Exactly.
So. So, do you guys have any suggestions yourselves how you would like to approach it?
Any of those alternatives?
I mean, I think if, if Bob and I park one behind each other and give the other person the other side, I don't see what the issue with that would be.
Is that the first name?
So what we're saying is that, you don't have room in the driveway to do that, the way it's designed right now, the way it's built right now. You'd have to add some more pavement at the back. Because it's not wide enough to park two cars side by side to get past that, the gable end. And then, can you, is there a picture of the others?
Do you want the survey up?
Yeah.
Yeah, just one second. Bringing it up.
Unless you have a shot down the driveway.
I don't think there's a driveway.
Yeah, I think it's only the other side of the house.
Is that your fence? That one prominently pictured there? Yes.
Is that in here?
I hope, yeah. That is our, ultimately, that fence has to come, I mean, it's, you know, part of, part of it is already not-
Brought it away.
Right.
It's gone.
So, I think what you're suggesting is paragona?
Along the fence on the right, no, on the right. Either on the right, there you go. So right there, you'd make like a nine-foot wide by eighteen-foot long paved parking space. And then right behind it, on the existing pavement, is where the other tandem, the tandem space would go. And then to the left, oh my God. It's so much draw. Yeah, can you, can you-
And you can walk it out here?
Yeah.
And then there?
Yeah.
And then the person can back out that way. So tandem goes here.
Well, the tandem doesn't even have to pull that maneuver you just did, because they need to take their old car back out, right?
They go back and then-
But that guy's the tenant, and now he's got room to take that maneuver. He's not blocked it. So you could increase some impervious, but it's only about, I don't know, who's the math? Less than two minutes per feet.
So you're essentially talking about extending the driveway out even further into the backyard?
Can you, can you point out, so where it says, uh-
By where it says with steps?
Comfy porch with steps. Do we have a picture? No, no, back, for you, for you, for you.
Here?
Nope. Next. There you go, right here.
Here.
That's the part that's sticking out too far to get two cars side by side in the driveway.
You have to go beyond this.
Right, but I'm just saying, so for example, if you wanted to take that little comfy porch off, now you would have to room to be side by side in the driveway.
At the entrance to the house.
Could you lift this to the side?
That's the, but that's the front entrance to the house.
Do you have a picture of it?
But that's the front-
Which brings me to my question, are you gonna have a separate entrance for your tenant?
Yes.
Yeah, the back stairs.
So it'll be right up here.
But I think that if we took that area off you're referring to, that would change the look of the front house.
That's the front entrance, the main door.
So that's where the church is and the other room.
Right. So, that's like, that's-
Yeah, it is.
That's the main entrance.
That's how the houses actually face each other, actually.
Yeah.
Right. So, like, this photo-
Right, the other thing is where the porch is.
So this photo is taken from the neighbor's house across the driveway. It's from their porch.
Right. But they just have to change the design. Yeah. So if you had the entrance where the, where the front porch was going to be, you'd have the room. But yeah, I don't know, definitely don't really need to do this.
That would, yeah, that changes the whole look of the house.
So, you're still going to be entering the house from the side? That's your main entrance? Even though there is a door on the porch, and I see, you're keeping the entrance on the side?
That's the original.
That's the original?
Right.
It's like Michael's house next door.
It was like a, the family house, and they built that house next door to the wall.
Yeah, I know.
So, basically, that's right.
Yeah.
Like, you could just walk, you know, the families could walk right across the driveways to each other, as opposed to having to go down that, around up the street, or down to the street and back up the other driveway. So without that fire escape on top.
Those are the alternatives, yes. You don't have to damage the character of the architecture of this house. You increase the impervious coverage, or you set in a, non-normally accepted parking step and parking area.
Are you sure you want renters on your third floor above your bedrooms clanking around?
I mean, honestly, we thought about that too, but, I mean, I think that, you know, with, with the substantial amount of money that's going into this house and to doing the work and stuff like that, we do want the option to be able to, you know, to, to use that extra income.
I, I get it. I, I own investment property in town. I own a two-family as well, so I, I get it. It's just, parking is a big issue for us here in town. It's something that all the boards are very sensitive to. So we're just trying to figure out how to make this project work on all levels. And of course, you know, I can only speak for myself, I'm sure everyone in this room is very excited about this property going through renovation. It's, you know, one of those properties that I think we've all looked at many times and said, ooh, that could use some love, so appreciate that. And while I understand it's reducing an impact and certainly beautifying the block, it's just a bit of a sticking point that we're still creating a pre-existing non-conforming, even though it's being reduced, but we're really not taking care of the parking issue. And I'm just a little stuck on it. I don't know, you know, I'm not gonna lay the law down and say it's a deal breaker for me, but I just feel like we have the opportunity to make this perfect. And I'm just hoping we can find that solution. How was that?
Do you have enough space to expand parking area?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, the sirens are-
Quite all right. I said you have enough space to expand parking area, correct?
Um, I gather we do if we go into the backyard.
All right, on square footage, you have enough. And parking is a sticking point with the city. And you have off-street parking, but one thing, when you, and I too have income property, one of the most important things is people look for off-street parking. Okay? So it might be, it might seem like a large sacrifice to make sure that that tenant has comfortable parking, but it is an investment. You know, and once you say you want, you have a multi-family dwelling, whether it's two or three, it's also that person's home, okay? And that person deserves a parking space. You know, you just can't tell them, you know, well, you got a hard parking space and you have to call, because you don't want to inconvenience that person when he has to come in and out. So you may have to make a sacrifice and adjust your plans to fill a car in there. Just one call.
Okay. I, I mean, we're certainly happy to look at that and see what we can do to try and find space and make it work. I mean, it would definitely, I guess, be a trade-off if we had to give up some of the yard in the back, but something, you know, we can certainly look and see how we can make that work.
Yeah. I mean, especially when you start talking investment property. I mean, if you were just living in it, you'd park anywhere you want. But once you have a person there, that person deserves one, at least one spot to park his car.
Okay.
You know.
Excuse me, I'm just looking at Don. This is all permitted parking on the street along Fourth Avenue.
Yeah, how does that impact? I'm not-
I was actually gonna say something.
The permit means that they could purchase the permit for their, for, for your tenant.
Is it, it might, it's also possible that perhaps a tenant in that building may already have a permit for that space.
Or it had been, or- Or a permanent.
And, and that is outside the house.
Yeah, I was gonna say that. So, I think it actually works to their benefit, the applicant's benefit, that it is permit only. I know, I live, um-
It's actually not to be used for the public.
Yeah, that's not, I know that they're-
But what, what do you say?
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So, I live between Deal Lake and Eighth, and there's permit only on, also the north side. And I must say, even during the height of summer, there, you can find permit parking.
Oh, but there's always parking.
And I live on Sunset, and there's permit parking on my side.
Yeah. So I, and look at the picture, and the planners report, there's not one car parked in there. I, I don't think they would find-
They're, they're actually able to purchase a permit type, space.
Yeah, I, I don't think they'll have an issue finding the permit spot near.
I don't know that we've ever introduced permit parking into a zoning conversation before. It's, it's something that I'm not that familiar with, so if we're-
So, like, I live over by Brittany. It, it's a game changer.
It is.
So I own, I actually privately bought three parking spots in my condo development two years ago, and I could break it out for a lot of money. And as soon as they went to permit parking, my lots are, I mean, I don't know.
It's a three space out front of their house.
Because there's, there's always spots.
It's always that space?
It's always that space.
No, no, it's not.
You've purchased-
No, no, no.
You can't permit anywhere in that space.
Just that zone.
And it goes by your license plate.
You are not guaranteed it, you are not guaranteed the spot.
It's just, it's just, it's just regulation.
So I, I have a question for our professionals, I guess, about this, because if it's a two-family and you are required to have three spots, how can a public space, which is what the, a permit parking space is, satisfy that requirement?
Permit's not for public, it's for, you have to prove, you have to prove residence in town.
Residence.
Correct. But if the rest, if a two-family residence is required to have three spots, are you allowed to take a municipal spot that you bought and apply it to your property? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so what I do, I own two condos and three parking spots, but the three parking spots are attached to one condo. My other condo shows no parking. So if I have a tenant in there, as the landlord, I have to go down to parking and, and vouch that I don't have a parking spot for them. So then they can get a permit.
Uh-huh.
So, if they have two people living up there and two cars, then they can get two permits, as long as they vouch that they don't have a parking spot for them.
Okay, but as-
The answer is yes. It's no different, it's no different from a legal perspective than getting a variance to park in front of the house if there were permits there. You're asking for an exception, and you're offering a viable, quote, viable alternative. And as long as the board accepts that, then we can perfectly do that as far as zoning is concerned.
Okay, I guess I would ju-
The only difference in this case is that it's not general public parking, it's permitted parking, and we have to make it a requirement that they would park in our-
Okay, but I guess what I, what I'm driving at is, as a public policy issue, where parking is such a hot button in this city, do we want to set a, a practice of allowing homeowners to purchase spaces when they could otherwise find some way to make room for a vehicle on their property?
That's what permit parking is there?
It's not, it's not a policy issue.
What are you talking about?
Excuse me, it's not a policy issue, it's a case-by-case issue, and with the variance application before the zone, you're not setting public policy here. So if it's, you consider it a viable alternative, it's something to consider in the future.
But you're setting precedent.
In each case that comes in, it's a license plate on the road.
Well, okay.
And, and in this case, we're still going from a four-family down.
Each, each application is on its own merit.
I understand that.
No, but, so what Lily's saying is that, is it fair to, for them to satisfy the requirement?
Yeah, that it-
Does it really satisfy the design exception criteria for the grant of that exception? Just like, we have this debate with the planning board from time to time, you're not allowed to use compact car spaces unless you have at least thirty parking spaces, and you show that you can accommodate all the required parking without compact spaces. But people come in all the time with inadequate parking, and they show us compact spaces, and they say, see, we've satisfied the parking requirement. And like, no, you're supposed to reduce the footprint of your impervious coverage by using compact spaces. You don't get to use compact spaces just to satisfy the requirement. You only get to use compact spaces because we're doing something better than the requirement. So, to her point, why should, yes, permit parking is available, but that's because there's a demand in the neighborhood of other multi-families who can't accommodate parking on their sites. This site can accommodate parking on its site. So as part of your deliberation of the positive criteria, what's better? To use the available permitted parking on street versus creating more impervious coverage? Or, or just outright grant the exception for stacking?
And, and I guess I'll posit another, I guess another way of looking at it is, the issue arises because the applicant wants to have a two-family house. Okay, this is, it's an R1 zone. We, we all are happy that you're bringing it down from four to two, but it's still an R1 zone, and what is the price that you pay to have that income-producing second, second residence?
Right, and so as part of your deliberation, this is the key reason we're here tonight, is as a pre-existing legal non-conforming use being changed to another non-conforming use. So yeah, we're ecstatic, it's not gonna be a four-family anymore. And once upon a time, this used to be a five-unit building. I issued the permit to do it from a five-four back in like nineteen eighty-eight.
That's going on in our neighborhood, is you've got, these guys live here full-time, but they may not next year. They may decide Airbnb their single-family house, which is quite expensive, and then you get twenty people splitting that cost. We have that garden right on Lampert. And there is a gazillion cars, and it's a single-family house, it's a six-bedroom house. It's massive, it's expensive, and the only way anybody can afford it is to cram in twenty people, which probably has at least ten cars, and it was an issue this year. So quite frankly, with a multi-family, with a single tenant, which you're probably only gonna get one or two people upstairs, you're, you're most likely not gonna have that issue. But that is an issue to take into consideration, and it is definitely a problem on two sides of where I live, on Fourth Avenue and on Lampert.
So, so again, evaluating, you'd say, just for the change in consideration as well. For the non-conforming use, you have to, you have to be comfortable with the fact that the property can handle whatever are the remaining negative aspects.
Right.
If off-street parking is a negative aspect, and you're not happy with the means of the applicant to mitigate that negative aspect, you don't have to approve it. So what we're, what we're deliberating right now is what are the negative aspects? It seems like the biggest thing is off-street parking, and we're trying to accommodate one parking space. So, as I described the alternatives, we can create a two-hundred-square-foot impervious surface in the backyard, they can find an off-site solution with the, with the church, they can modify their building to reduce the footprint, to accommodate the side-by-side and the driveway. Or the board can just say, it's a two-family house, it seems like a low-turnover event, stacking three cars in this driveway is not an obscene solution to the problem. You know, it's only three cars, we can accept three cars backing in and out. They're gonna cooperate with each other. It's not ten cars, it's not five cars.
But that's not something we can guarantee, Donna, so.
Either way, that's user, that's management.
Either way, they're gonna need a permit on the street.
No.
No.
Well, yeah, but if they're selling it, they go.
If they put a parking space in the backyard, they don't have to get a permit, a, a street permit, they, they comply.
But they're most likely still gonna need-
That's not zoning.
Not as far as anybody in this room should care.
Let, let's ask the Alders what they wanna do. Mr. and Mrs. Alder, you've heard all these different ways to approach this issue. How would you like to approach this issue?
I mean, I think from our perspective, we would rather not add more asphalt to this house, and, and, you know, to add something, another parking space in the backyard, when frankly, the driveway is five or six cars long already. And, you know, we would rather take, you know, work with somebody to try and juggle cars inside of that driveway. We'd also rather not change the front porch and change the look of the house, because it's something that, you know, we really like about the house, is, is the original look of it and the way it's built. And we, we don't wanna chop up the house just to park a car. So, you know, frankly, I think we, we weren't really aware of this part- So, you know, frankly, I think we weren't really aware of this parking requirement until today. So, we haven't thought it all through. I mean, we know our neighbors rent their back house, and their tenant parks on the street and has a permit. And I guess that's what we thought was an acceptable solution. So, we were unaware that we were going to have to try to have three cars able to move at the same time.
The house that he owns is yours?
Right.
That's a single-family with a tenant in the back?
Yes, I think it's actually zoned, what is it, three?
It's a, it's a multi-family.
Right. But they have a tenant who lives in the back and has a parking permit, parks on the street, and there's always ample parking out there. And our house is actually the last house in that row, so I think there's probably three spots in front.
Yeah.
That are permit parking.
What about perhaps utilizing, as Donna suggested, making an agreement with the church next door?
That's fine, but we would have to talk to them.
Can they satisfy their on-site parking requirement and other location?
It would technically be a design exception again, which the board can let.
What's the difference between that and the permit parking?
Right, like how is it different to go to the church?
It'd be a guaranteed spot.
What does that mean?
It'd be a guaranteed spot for your tenant, for you.
Right.
If you shared the apartment with the church.
Yeah, it takes much, much longer.
Yeah. So how are you going to guarantee that the church is not going to be sold, or the church is not going to be released? That's awfully complicated.
It is complicated. It's very complicated.
It's very complicated, very expensive.
I also see a problem with parking in someone else's lot as an insurance problem. Say your tenant parked in the church's lot, and then their car got damaged. Now becomes, who's paying to get my car fixed? You know, and why is your car parked here? So I don't see an advantage to using someone else's property to solve your problem.
I think that, you know, I've spoken with one of the, I believe it's, he's a deacon at the church, and he's always very, you know, like if you need to park a car here or park something here for a short time, no problem, whatever. I don't think there's, we certainly never had any conversations which would say, hey, can we rent some space here from you? Or however that would work, but to your earlier point, that's, that could end instantly. Plus, they chain that parking lot sometimes to keep people from cutting through or parking in there that don't belong when it's hard to find parking on the street, when people are going to the beach and stuff like that. So I'm not sure that the church is an actual solution.
It's not a viable option.
I'm not sure where we've gone with this so far then. We've kind of eliminated the things that you want to do, and we haven't come up with an option. So, where are we?
If I may speak to another option, I think, you know, that additional space that, in the driveway, you could make that permissible, so water can go through, but then it might not blend in with the existing asphalt.
Like gravel, through gravel driveway or something?
Something that lets water through, so when.
Right, there's permeable pavers.
There's actually a product you can use that'll look exactly like a lawn and it could support a car.
So there's that option too?
You're only talking about 171 square feet.
It wouldn't be too expensive. Yeah, I mean, I personally don't really have a problem with the parking here. Like I said, I think, I don't think they're going to have a problem getting permit parking, finding a space. And if we do do that route, I would like to see a lane designated just for the tenant. So if someone has to get the permit, it would be, you know, the owners. So, I like the idea of designating a tenant's spot in the driveway, as Donna said straight back. Like you were saying, like here, right? So the tenant can go right over.
If they're not building an additional space?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And then, so the owners would park over here on the street. I mean, I don't really see that as, I suggested that, or permeable pavement. I do not think we should add more asphalt to that backyard, because this driveway is already way too big, goes up to the house. That's just my two cents.
I'm more inclined to what Brittany says as well. I would not want to add more asphalt and decrease the permeability. I mean, I do like what Jason suggested, if you do have a designated spot for the tenant, I would suggest some type of permeable, you can make it look like grass. I'm not sure what that product is, but. Please, Mr. Serpico.
Might be the right time for the applicant to take a step back, go talk to somebody, engineer somebody about this. Take the comments of the board and come back with a plan.
Is that acceptable to both you and your wife, Mr. Alder?
Should we open to the public first?
No, no, just, we'll get there, we'll get there, but this is just, you can't, you can't, you're going to approve. If you say that, they say that's fine, we haven't seen it, we haven't seen the design on it or anything, so you don't know. You're approving something you haven't seen.
And I agree with that.
I'm not sure what it is you want to see, you want to see a parking space in a driveway?
Your plan for this one spot?
Or how to address.
They may need a site plan.
It doesn't sound like.
Parking plan, they need a site plan, but they need a parking.
Providing three spaces, you're not getting away with two spaces. Your current driveway doesn't accommodate three, under the ordinance. So, what they want to know is how can you accommodate the third parking space? We've talked about suggestions of how to do that. It doesn't sound like there's consensus among the board members that on-street permit parking is an adequate solution for the tenant's space. Like Brittany made this hybrid suggestion about, you know. So it may be prudent for the applicant to adjourn tonight, address the other questions that were raised about the windows and the drainage, and then come back with answers about how to handle the parking and those other.
Especially the stormwater management, what you plan on.
And you said you're engaged with Jason at Mode Architects, who's your architect for this project?
Yes.
Yeah. I would encourage you to engage with him on these topics, he probably can bring a lot of enlightenment to hopefully.
Certainly talk about the downspouts.
The downspouts and materials and so forth.
Somebody has to draw up a plan for the drainage so that Jason can take a look at it.
I agree.
That kind of thing. That's what you got to do.
You're inches away, inches away, you're very, very close.
I think we have to assess the cost of doing these things and then weigh the cost of just leaving it as it is.
Yeah, and just selling it as a four-family.
Because I, I mean, it's a substantial cost to do this restoration work. And we understand there are, you know, certainly the issues with the water, certainly the issues with the parking. But we're taking substantial steps to take what was a number of separate units off of this market with cars parked everywhere, and reducing it down to what's essentially three cars. We are aware of our water problem, and it's something that we want to deal with. Although, that's not changing that house. We're not changing the footprint of this house. So the water problem exists now, and we're going to try to make it better, because that's our property and we want to obviously maintain it as well as we can, it's a substantial investment. But I'm not, you know, I'm not sure, we have to kind of weigh the costs and how much additional cost this is for what we're talking about.
Yeah, I agree. That's what you have to do.
Yep.
So should we carry you to another meeting, or are you withdrawing your application?
No, I don't think we're withdrawing, I mean, I think we have to, we need to discuss this further. I'm not sure how much of a delay this is.
We could carry you to the end of September, couldn't we?
We could, if that would be enough time for you to gather and make changes to your plans. Would two weeks be enough time?
We have no idea, we, you know, we.
No, my experience in representing applicants.
At least a month, yeah.
You're not going to get them to.
Right, right.
So.
So the next day would be October 26th.
So, I, you know, I mean, I guess at this point, then that's what we have to do. And then if we decide that we're just not going to do anything, we're going to leave it to a four-family and re-rent it, then.
You'll let us know.
We'll let you know.
Although, the only three issues that we're talking about, you know, they're going to have to come back. We don't want them to come up with something else later, force them to come back for anything else.
I wrote down, sometimes cutters and downspouts, the windows, if you want to see anything on the windows, from the picture that the contractor can give, to come back and show you the windows, that's up to you.
I think the railing and column design.
The front porch railing design and.
Whoever designs that for you or your contractor, there are specific design guidelines for posts and railings in your district. Someone has to look at those to make sure that what you come in with is compatible with those requirements. There's a number of different options in there, but we've had people who come in with modern, and they don't get any of the design guidelines, so it's best to have whoever's going to do the work, and you take a look at those guidelines.
Okay, so you want to see what exactly the posts and rail will look like?
Yeah, yeah, or a diagram, look, it's going to be, I don't, I'm not an architect. Whatever it is you're going to use, you can usually get a picture from your contractor that says this is the stuff we're going to use. These are the type, you can bring it in and show it. But in doing so, make sure that someone looks at those design guidelines. In 26 years that I have been here, many, many people come in and they propose to change the porches back, or change the railings and everything else, and they invariably do not look at the design guidelines. And that's a problem. So the best thing to do, and look at the options and see if there's one that you like.
I'm sure your architect, your architectural firm will.
No issue, I'm sure that we will, right.
And again, what you suggested tonight, that you would match next door, I can tell you, is consistent with the guidelines. So if you have to, just draw a spec of that column and rail configuration, and maybe that's something they say, that's it.
Okay. And then.
And then the parking is the big.
Yeah, and the windows, whatever it is with windows you're going to select with your contractor, bring back a diagram that cutsheed it up too. Pretty simple. Yeah, brochures.
Look, what you guys are doing here is enormous. You've moved the ball all the way down the field, you've moved it 70 yards. You're like at the three-yard line. Please remain calm and just know that we're here to help you, and we would love nothing more than to see this property, and you guys realize this, but you're honestly just inches away. And I don't think anything that we're proposing tonight should throw your budget out of whack. These are, they're minor tweaks.
Well, I guess we'll find that out.
Okay.
Wait, before you, please don't leave yet, so first we have to agree on a date that you want to come back.
Well, I think we should come back as soon as we can, so why don't we do it in two weeks? And if we're not done in two weeks, we'll do it again in two more weeks.
What's the requirement for submission of documents to be considered by the board? How much time does it have to be?
Well, it depends, so, you know, we only need documents 10 days prior to the hearing.
So that gives them four days.
Right, but, well.
Yeah, yeah, two weeks minus 14 days.
And if they don't want consultants to review them?
That's up to the board.
I don't think four days is enough time for everybody to, especially the professionals to take a look. We're going to have to push it to the end of October.
And it all depends, do you want revised ones, or do you just want cut sheets?
The layout of the parking is going to have to be a plan.
It's going to have to be a site plan, yeah.
That's viable? For an amendment to survey something, it's going to be something that's calculable and can be verified and is accurate. But as far as the other things, the cut sheet and things like that, those are fairly subjective. But if they're gauging an architect, that should not be a problem to get that sorted. They have to decide with the architect what type of downspouts and so on that are going to be compatible.
Mode should really be able to help you with all these issues.
Yeah, there are issues that have to be faced anyway, at some point.
I guess we're not really sure how the downspouts impact changing from a four-unit to a two-unit.
It, it doesn't, but since you're here before us.
It works into your drainage, you have to satisfy the board that the drainage on the property is going to be problematic. The downspouts are part of the drainage system, that's why. That's the only thing for the downspouts, as far as the subjective look of the downspout, that's entirely up to you.
So you just want to see where the downspouts will be on here, on the house?
What do you want to see?
I want to remediate the water from your house and prevent it from going on to your neighbor's property and.
The sidewalks.
Well, but it is an issue for this board and for this town to remediate the water. And you have to have some type of, some type of plan for that.
A water remediation plan is what we need to get, right?
Drainage.
A water drainage plan?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and then a parking layout on a site plan?
Not a site, you're not required to submit a site, there is no site plan for single-family residences.
But essentially, it's going to be some type of plan, though, Joe.
License that says this is the way it's going to be.
Right.
What type of license is that?
Surveyor, engineer?
He's capable of.
Yeah, or your architectural firm might be able to help you.
Okay. If you raise these issues with Mode, they will, they will help you with this.
As far as the drainage plan and the plot plan for the parking, feel free to, you and Mode together, give me a call, and we'll talk about what we need to see.
Okay.
I understand what the board is asking.
All right, so a drainage plan, a parking layout, I want.
And then the architectural details for the windows and railings and the column.
For the front porch.
What type of windows are you looking for?
We just want to go with your plot, is it going to be double column, is it going to be six over one?
Like what's acceptable, is my question.
Again, that comes down to the design standards, and the design standards are something that.
So look up the design standards of windows.
Your architect, your architect should know.
What we've described is what's generally in the design standards, you want double column windows, the first priority. They can be six over one, but they can be one over one.
Six over six.
That's preference for yourself, not the design standards, all those types of exceptions. Sometimes when we have a more, I'm going to say better, but, you know, a lively or more historic-looking neighborhood, we will take examples from the neighborhood. If there's a lot of six over ones, we'll say six over one is still in this neighborhood, so we're going to suggest you do six over one. We don't have that situation in here. The only house that's really, you know, as close to traditional is next door for a five. So, you know, we might use that as cues for the details, just like with the railings and the columns.
This is the Conterdor firm?
Yes.
They're familiar with all of these.
They know the board very well, so. They know the various aspects of what.
And I haven't worked with Jason there, but I have worked with other members of that on board issues. They know to call us if they have a question about, you know, would this be a better solution? Material-wise or style-wise, or is this going to be deemed consistent?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
So is the end of October acceptable for you both?
If that's the soonest that we can do it, then that's what we have to do.
I believe it is correct, Irene?
I think that is as soon as you're going to be able to, knowing markets, they're not going to turn that around so quickly. They're not going to be able to get your.
How long is the application pending?
That's the other aspect. Well, that's the other aspect. Do they need their attorney to send a letter to us, Jack?
No, I don't think so. I think they were beginning of September, so, I mean, I'm sorry, they ended in August, so.
Yeah, it was-
Yeah, August.
It'll be less than 90 days when they come back.
It'll be less, I think it'll be less than 90 days.
What October date is that?
26th.
26th. October 26th?
See you then.
All right, hold on.
We don't have to know. We're going to cover some procedural issues now for the motion.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion.
No notification.
Yes. I'm going to make a motion to carry the 407 Fourth Avenue application to October 20-
6th.
2021 without further notice.
I'll second.
At 7:00 PM here in City Council Chambers.
Okay, I have a motion by Christopher Abelloni and a second by Russell Lewis. And I'll take role. Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Jill Potter is the merchant. Wendy Glaston?
Yes.
Temperance Irving. Bonnie Nutt?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
And Christopher Abelloni.
Yes.
May application carry to October 26th, 2021 without further notice?
Thank you. And I will make a motion to end the meeting. Adhere.
Thank you. I have a motion by Christopher Abelloni and a second by Brittany Ashman. Any input? Thank you.